Today's August 3rd, 2016. It's 10:00 AM. I call the meeting of the Monongahela County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three Commissioners are present. Everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep it.
Good morning.
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 I have 122 listings for exonerations in the amount of $58,690.45. There are minutes that need to be approved for the meeting and the work session of July 6th, 2016, and the special meeting on July 13th, 2016. I have vouchers. The general county is $201,163.31. 911 cash is $109,180.13. Mason Dixon Park was $250.41, and the assessor's valuation was $72.98. And for the purchasing card vouchers, the general county was $40,785.36. magistrate court was $51.41. Camp Muffley was $80.81. Mason Dixon Park was $85.97. The assessor's valuation was $151.38, in the total amount of $351,821.76.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
I also have the fiduciary orders of August 3rd, 2016, and the statement of services for Cynthia Van Stanford.
Okay, move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Okay. Introduction of new employees. MJ?
Hi, everyone. I'm MJ Zink. You can stand up, Madison. I'm the Director of Monongahela Youth Services, and Madison came to us as a psychology student and did her internship. She's been with us all summer, and I have asked her if she would like the opportunity, you know, to be part-time. She's a hometown Morgantown girl. UHS, right? And she'll be graduating in May in her psychology degree. So, I'd like to ask if she can join the team at YSC.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
And thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a hard job, but, you know, we really need qualified people.
Yeah, especially psychologists.
Yeah. She had a great guidance counselor, I'm told.
I did. Thank you very much.
You must have been somebody else.
Is he the reason why you entered psychology?
Yeah.
Because he was making...
That was nuts.
Okay. Sheriff, you have someone for us?
Yes, very briefly. This is just a change in status. Donnie Powell, who was a full-time court security officer for several years, changed and went back to part-time status because he had been retired from the Federal Bureau of Prisons, and then he started drawing Social Security, so he wanted to do that well. His situation has changed, and he asked to be transferred back to full-time status. We have an opening because we just had one of our guys leave that got hired at Hazelton Prison, so we do have an opening. So, it's just a lateral transfer from part-time to full-time. We would like that to take effect, well, on August 1st is actually when we did it. His monthly salary would be $2,243.03, and of course, by virtue of being a full-time position, he would be eligible for benefits, and because of the change, again, he would have a six-month probationary period.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
Thank you.
Are you gonna stay around, because I want to ask your question on the unfinished business? You have an opportunity. Okay.
All right. Okay, now's the time we take comments from the public. I'm gonna open the session. Comments from the public? Comments from the public?
I know this...
Where's Bobby? He said he had a comment from the public. Oh, there he is. You said you had a comment from the public?
Yeah.
Now's your time to speak. Identify yourself, address, and...
518 Pringle Avenue, Star City. We're here today to petition the Commission on putting Sunday hunting on the ballot under State Code 20-Days-Tues-5. It's the county's, whether they want to put it on the ballot or not. And I have the code here. It states what you have to do. You have to put a legal ad in the newspaper. I just want to know what we have to do to get that, because you're talking, in gun season, you're talking two Sundays, and load season, I don't see how it would hurt anything, but let's let the public decide. We tried, I think they tried it like eight years ago or something.
Is it restricted just to private property?
Private property.
No parks?
Yep.
People who just hunt are private property?
I have the code, and I can give it to you, and...
Right. What's the wishes? Do you want to put this on next week's agenda?
Yeah, I think we, yeah, let's put it on the agenda in case somebody wants to have their opinion.
So, why don't we just submit that to be on the agenda, Colleen, next week, and we'll go from there? Do you need me to leave the code with you? Sure. Give it on the code unit, it would be helpful, and then you can have it in the package for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see where we're hurt, I mean, they're gonna put drink at 11 o'clock on Sunday, so I don't know why it would hurt.
Oh, great.
If we could have a drink going?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
When they mean go and get wild turkey, they really mean literally.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that section. Thank you. Oh, you're wearing two hats. You got your other hat on?
I do.
Colleen Coon, grants.
I don't have any grants for you this week.
Well, okay.
That makes it easy.
Very good. Then you take that hat back off and put this one back on.
Got it.
Ben said he was gonna make a comment on your nice hair.
Oh, so sweet of him.
Okay. It's not quite 10:15, so let's jump down to correspondence.
We received a letter on Monday from the Monongahela Conservation District. It says, "I rate this letter as one of the Monongahela County elected supervisors of the Monongahela Conservation District. When the district received the letter of rejection of our allocation request for $4,000 to maintain and repair the five flood control dams located in Preston County, I accepted it as due to severe budget necessity. I realize that has not radically changed, but I also read almost daily that there was more carryover money than expected. As a result of the larger carryover, projects that were originally rejected or new projects are being funded. Therefore, I request that you review and seriously consider our original February request of $4,000. Granted, the use of the money would go to dams not located in Monongahela County, however. Unquestionably, the homes and businesses located in the Decker's Creek Valley from the Monongahela-Preston County line to the Monongahela River are the major beneficiaries provided by these dams. Money allocated by county commissions for dam maintenance and repair are matched by the state dollar-for-dollar, which at present means the Monongahela District shortage is $8,000. There are two other counties in this district, Marion and Preston, annually allocate money for this purpose as they have already budgeted it for 2016-17. I respectfully request that you review and fund our budgetary requests for 2016-17." Paul Nesselrod.
Is there any desire to place that on the agenda next week, or what's your wish?
I recall the request was simply a request. There was no financial statement for that, so I would invite, or I would like to allow the discussion of this on reception of a full financial statement, in other words, having the necessary paperwork filled out that we sent everybody else. In other words, all we received for this, and I remember this request immediately, really, was just simply a request.
Why don't we, in that, why don't we just notify them, as Ed just said, that they need to fill out the paperwork, they need to get us the financials, and we'll place them on the work session.
The other thing I do want to put in the record is, I'm expecting probably we'll get more of these, but I think what we have to remember is that the coal severance is what we, this came out of coal severance. It isn't gonna come out of the regular budget. I mean, I would, is what I would be hoping. So, that's what we just have to be very careful, because I'm sure we're gonna get a number more, but the coal severance was limited. Maybe if we get more coal severance next year, then we could look at that. But, I agree with you. Let's take a look and see what they can offer and show us the financials.
That's what we'll deal with, Ed.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further correspondence? Okay. Let's do a few minutes. Any unfinished business?
I would like to ask, boy, there he comes. The sheriff, I realize that if you could give us an update, August 1st has passed, and you could explain to the public why that date is very important to us.
August 1st was the date that we set for the two remaining hotels, motels, that were in arrears on their occupancy tax. Ramada Inn is one of them. They owe for the full year, or almost the full year of 2015. Hilton Garden Inn is the second one, and they owe nine months' debt? Nine months on theirs. Everybody else that was in arrears, we had contacted, and they paid theirs up. Most of those were a month or two behind, and they made those up. Some of them, even after we sent letters, when we took this over in December of last year, we had sent letters, copy the state code, copy the handbook dealing with hotel-motel occupancy tax, and some of them that we contacted that were in arrears a month or two thought that they didn't have to pay till the end of the month. And it clearly states in the letter, and now it's the 15th of the month, that you have to have your previous month's collections in. So, where we're at right now with Ramada Inn and Hilton Garden Inn, they've been notified in writing, they both received the letter, we have the return mail slips, a return slip where they received the letter, that they were to pay all their arrears by August 1st. If they didn't, then we would proceed with legal action against them. They have not paid, neither one has paid, and we are in the process of getting with prosecuting attorney's office and doing our investigation and hold them responsible for the taxes that they owe.
I want to thank you for the report, and I know I'm one, just one County Commissioner, but I know the others are concerned too. I want to be a good neighbor, however, where my concern is, is that they've collected the money. It isn't that you were paying a tax and say, "Oh, you still owe $100 for your own property." They have collected it separately. We should have that money. The public should know that we should have that money, and I am adamant to go very strongly and immediately to take action. I think this is something that has to be resolved. It's unfair to the other businesses that are doing this, and I think we need to make a statement that they need to be a part of this community, and when, and the question is legality-wise, if there, we may have to look at other avenues besides just collecting the funds. And it's, I'm very adamant on this, I'm sorry. It's something that is wrong. I know CVB is having problems with cash flow, and we are talking a lot of money here. We're talking more than, if I'm correct, $200,000, aren't we?
Probably close to that.
Yes, so somewhere around a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, again, I want to thank you. I just want to throw my full support. I don't know if the other Commissioners want to say something, because I think, you know, we've been working on this since, what, December of last year, when we started this process? If Ed or Alvin wants to say something.
I feel adequate time has been given.
I'm just gonna repeat what I've said numerous times for two years now, whenever this whole thing started. It's not money out of their pocket. It's not money they legally can put in their pocket. It is paid by the people that rent the rooms, and it should go in a separate account. If it doesn't, I think that's at least a misdemeanor. If they merge or contaminate this tax with their own assets for remodeling or whatever, it's illegal. You know that, Sheriff, I'm not telling you anything. I haven't repeated it a dozen times and said it a dozen times.
If you could just keep up with another, yeah, so that we're informed.
I'm totally confident that the sheriff and the prosecutor's office will do whatever's necessary to make sure that this, this doesn't happen in the future.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the report.
Thank you. Okay. All right. It's now 10:15. Is anybody here for the Kaczynski petition to remove the personal representative of Robert Joseph Kaczynski Estate? Anyone out there?
Uh-oh, no, we don't want him.
Oh, you don't leave. I need to talk to you before you go. Philip, are you here for the Kaczynski Estate?
Yes. Again, that's being continued.
You're asking for a continuance?
I didn't ask for the, I didn't ask for the continuance. Mr. Rollo did, because his client is at the Cleveland Clinic attending to her ex-husband.
Do you want, you want, okay.
It was, it's to be reset on a date agreeable to the Commission and both parties.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to figure out, whether you had a date certain, or we just need a motion to continue it to a time that the two parties can agree?
That would be sufficient, because, again, we're, we're having a hearing in front of Mr. Armstead on the accounting issue, I want to say, the latter part of August.
Okay. Can I have a motion to continue this to a date?
Move to continue, so the two parties can agree on a time, and then we will meet at that time.
Reschedule.
Reschedule.
Second.
Yes, ma'am?
Nah, I just thought I think it's the right thing to do, because, you know, it's her father for children, and he's a nice guy.
Well, the, we have to take this step, A, because it's gonna be part of the record, and B, if we, if we don't do anything with it, it just disappears. You have to start all over again. So, by doing this, it just keeps everything alive. Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Okay, just when you're able to get with Mr. Rollo, the two of you come up with a date, and we'll reschedule.
Again, I'm going to suggest with Mr. Rollo that, again, that it could be continued till after the hearing in front of Mr. Armstead, because that might resolve the majority of the issues.
That'd be great. Sounds like a winner to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Reports from elected officials. Carrie, do you have anything for us today? Ma'am? I'm sorry. Sheriff, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Ron, do you have anything from Granville?
I don't know.
Okay. Mayor?
There you are, sir.
Good to see you.
Who do I complain to about the extortion of these dog, dog cops?
The what?
Dog cops.
It's coming up right now.
I got word that they were catching them in Star City and dropping them off in Westover, and then we had to pay because we had to call the dog catcher. How we can find out if there's any truth to that?
I don't know. Do they have the Star City brand on them?
Well, there's also a hint of Granville on it, too. But I don't know who talked to him. Ron's done that before. We caught him before.
Everyone's been dropped.
Well, but from Granville to Westover, they don't have to swim.
Well, there's a creek between there.
They take the bridge.
Well, we'll, we'll start an investigation.
That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from County Commissioners. Tom?
Oh, you had Bobby had something?
Oh, Bobby, I'm sorry.
About that?
Since they brought it up, I guess I'll report on our intergovernment agreements with the city of Morgantown, Granville, Star City, and Westover. We do it every year, and it's in the city's contract to raise 3% a year or so. It'll be raised $1,072.40. That'll bring the city's contract up to $36,819.11. So, the city had 247 calls this year. So, we base everybody, other municipalities, on the amount of calls that they have and what it costs per call. So, in town of Star City, their calls went down. Last year, they paid $2,564.11. They only have 14 calls this year, so for the year following 2016-2017, they will pay $2,086.84.
Is that where the mayor got his suspicion?
It's coming. It's coming. They went down. Granville also went down. Last year, they paid $6,033.20. This year, they will pay $2,534.20. They had 17 calls. The city of Westover has went up. Last year, they paid $11,915.57. This year, they'll pay $15,353.18. Their calls went from 88 to 103. And I was explaining to the mayor and Ron while they were here that Dana sends an email every month showing them how many calls they've had, so everybody knows that they've had this many calls, so it's not gonna be a surprise to them. It may be a surprise that Westover went up, but they had more calls.
Sure.
So, we're gonna get this wrote up and typed up and sent to each municipality, and if they want it, okay. If not, they can have their own hog warden service with their own center to keep their animals. But, that's what I wanted to bring to your attention. We have to get it.
So, we're gonna put that on the agenda next week?
Yeah, hopefully they'll have everything typed up, you all signed, to send these to the municipality.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
We'll look into the investigation this week.
Okay. There you go. Tom?
First, I want to thank, first, I want to congratulate Ed. I went to the parade, and it was probably one of the largest fair parades I've seen in years. I mean, and it lasted over an hour, so it was a fun parade, and I just want to congratulate you. I thought it was a real positive experience, and seems like everyone enjoyed that. The second thing I do want to thank, the superintendent out at Camp Muffley, Rachel. Even though I live at Aston Estates, I didn't realize on the other night, there was a major storm that just destroyed the, I mean, the culverts and everything out one mile away from me at Camp Muffley. They were flooded. She is pregnant and was out in the middle of trying to save equipment for the University of High band. The band director could not believe she was out there trying to do that. So, I want to accommodate, you know, thank her, and they ended up having to move in the food and the band camp back to University of High School. But I think she deserves a letter of appreciation for going far and above, you know, duty, and I know Bobby and his group went out there to try, and unfortunately, maybe, Ed, you might know more about what happened, but I just wanted to thank him and just acknowledge what she had done.
Rachel certainly works very hard.
Yes, so, and that's it.
I've received nothing but compliments from the, matter of fact, I, I was meeting with Mr. Doyle up on Thursday when the first flooded, because it actually flooded twice.
Okay, that did not...
Yes, it flooded on Thursday and again on Saturday. And so, I was actually meeting with Mr. Doyle, looking at the potential for a log cabin to possibly move as an office for Mason Dixon Park, which we're receiving an estimate. Until we have any more information, then I'll bring it back to Commission with Mr. Doyle. But it started to rain, and so, because the rain seemed to be so heavy, and I was going to Camp Muffley anyway, I actually went down to the camp and watched it rise almost, I'd say, 40 inches in about 40 minutes. It was really a great amount of water, because it was actually hitting the, it didn't go over the top of the new bridge, but the water was lapping against that bridge, and so it flooded the bottom, and then again, it did it on Saturday. And Rachel has taken it all in stride. She has, again, been an exemplary person in position out there. Last night at the fair, speaking of the fair, and thank you for the compliment, I don't do any of the work, all I do is talk, but, well, I'm not chairman anymore. I surrendered the chairmanship of the fair. But really, it was a great parade. Last night at the fair, we did crown Miss Faith Lynn Walker as Queen of the Fair. Would invite everybody to come out in the community to enjoy this event that is, yep, it's family fun. There's just something for everybody out there. Again, you can find me at the barn, and I've got a booth inside, which I pay for every year, but my booth usually isn't occupied. I'll be at the barn having a good time. So, come to the fair, folks.
I want to also commend the fair parade. It was, and the weather was perfect, too.
It was.
The sun wasn't out. You weren't getting murked, but it was just perfect weather. It's, what did you say? Fair, fair weather for the fair?
Fair weather for the fair, indeed.
Yeah.
Let's hope it continues.
That's right. That's right. That's good. I, do you want, do you want to make your suggestion of a letter of recognition for Rachel as a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we send a letter of recognition for her.
Recognition and appreciation.
Appreciation.
I would happily second that.
Yeah.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Okay, we'll have a prayer letter for that. I want to thank Granville for hosting the Color of Law yesterday. That was, I attended that, that was an exceptional, exceptional program. I want to participate in the future. This good turnout, and I think there's a, there was a lot of good, good things that took place, and we need to, we need to keep working on. There's a, it's a lot, a number of issues that we're dealing with there. Last week, we had, I was unable to attend because I had too many other meetings, but a new Colonel for the Corps of Engineers was installed, so we welcome him, welcome him aboard. Of course, we continue to work on the river and the river locks. There should be, I will have to report probably in September to what we've done on keeping the locks open and all, so I'll be attending that later, later, either later in this month. There's a possibility they'll move it to August, but to keep our program, our program is still an exceptional, recognized program of public, public working together, public, public-private working together to keep the locks open. This weekend, we've got the County Commissioners Association Board meeting on Saturday, and then our annual conference started on Sunday through Tuesday. I will be monitoring and teaching two classes, one on TIFs and financing, and the other on Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. So, the second one, the second one's part of a round robin, so if you want to avoid me, you can go to one of the other programs. So, that will be going on. We're also, we're also, I wanted to point out that we have, I will be emailing you a list of our positions and platforms that we finalized at the National Association of Counties. One of the, one of the things that I think is, is key to our economic development and growth is going away with the stove piping. is going away with the stove piping, as they like to refer to, or silos. People working together, so I'll share that with you, and maybe, maybe we'll discuss it further in work session as to whether we have a group of resolutions we want to adopt, and there's a couple of things in there that would give us ideas for legislation. We did not, because of the number of meetings that's been going on and the flooding, we were unable to have our normal July Legislative Committee Conference. So we're going to be spending some time on developing that at the annual conference. So again, if you have anything, be sure and bring that with you, ideas, and then we'll develop it out, and then probably adopt our legislative agenda in the fall board meeting in the end of September. That's all I have.
One more item, I just thought that we want to send a letter to the city council wishing Jeff McCorsy good luck, and at the same time Glenn Kelly was chosen as the interim mayor, or city manager, and that way, you know, and open, you know, positive.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so move.
Yes, second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, that reminds me, they have the municipal league conference.
Right, right now.
I guess starting right now.
Yep, in Pittsburgh, I think.
See how that turns out. Okay, anything further? Yes?
Can you just clarify, you had settlements before you today, fiduciary settlements?
Yes.
But you didn't specifically mention those, I just want to make, and they're not on the report. I just want to make sure that you do have those and can get a motion to approve those settlements for today.
Are they in here?
They should be.
All the others, all these, okay. Just make a motion to approve all those settlements.
Okay, do I have to list each one?
No.
Okay, move that we approve the settlements from the fiduciary commissioners as written on this page, page 50, book 50, page 528.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Move for adjournment?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.